Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee. It's Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the middle high school library. If you could please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I get into the hearing of visitors, I just have, I have three quick, three quick announcements. Two really quick, one quick-ish. So first, I would like to welcome Anna Brown, senior at Abington High School as the elected student representative from the high school on the school committee for the 2024-2025 school year. Anna, welcome and congratulations. Looking forward to everything you're able to bring and whenever you want, if you have anything you wanted to add, just feel free to add, okay? One other thing, and this goes for people here now, but anybody who's coming, if you see this whenever, there is a sign-in sheet right at the beginning of the, right at the end, at the podium when you first walk in at the shelf. It has some agendas there. If you get a chance, if you're here, if you can please sign in, it helps with certain things. So those are the two quick ones. The other quick-ish one is it's, we have a safety committee that meets with the superintendent, has administrative staff, Pam is our representative on there. So they work on some great things, but there's been some instances, this may not go where you're thinking, but it's bikes and incidents with kids on bikes in the school parking lot, coming to school in the morning. Our ask is that everybody, for parents, if you can remind your kids to be safe in riding their bikes, it's, it can be dangerous, you're not paying attention. I know helmets may be a useless battle, but nobody wears them. The school resource officers mention it to the kids, they get shrugged off. There's already been two instances with kids getting hurt on bikes this year. Parents, other, other public driving, be careful of your surroundings, be aware of your surroundings. So it seems like a preventable thing that I've noticed in dropping off. I know others have noticed in dropping off. We don't need to be doing wheelies through the parking lot or on Route 18. Nothing good can come of it. So the ask is just, parents, talk to your children, make sure they're doing, they're playing it safe. Even if you think they are, mention it again, it can't hurt. So that's kind of what I had on that. I didn't know if anybody wanted to add anything to it, or I just wanted to get that out there because it's, we had a couple right away and I know for a few more months, a couple, at least a month or two, anyway, bikes will still be a thing, so.
If I could just add just a thank you and appreciation to the administration of all the building, central office and the police department. I think across the board, definitely on the South Shore, but even more widely spread, there's been an increase in threats that have been investigated and I think the school has done a great job communicating. So thank you to that.
I agree. Thanks, Melanie. So those were the three, the three things. With that, if anybody would like to speak as part of the hearing of visitors, please come to the podium and just state your name and address for the record. All right. So reading an approval of the minutes from our August school committee meeting, as the committee gets a chance, I'll just be looking for a motion to approve in a second, or if there's any adjustments or edits, please just mention them.
My promotion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So for the report of the assistant superintendent for Dr. Bost, we're gonna delay the art department till probably a little bit later on in the, in the, during the committee, during the meeting, I'm sorry. And we're gonna jump to item B, Dr. Bost for the fiscal year 25 curriculum instruction assessment update.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I did want to quickly update you on some things that are going on as far as curriculum instruction and assessment in the schools this year. Most of it is not new to you. They're things we've talked about before, so I'm just really providing updates. Last month, I shared the information about our iReady universal assessment tool that was being implemented from kindergarten to grade six, just providing an update that, that we're in the middle of that testing window now. The teachers received their first training on September 9th and the window for testing in the fall is September 15th to October 1st. So many students have already completed their testing or they're halfway through. So they finished either math or literacy and are on to the other subject area. Dr. Michelle and I today spoke with a teacher who raved about the results that she's seeing as far as guiding her instruction with her students and the groupings that she's making in literacy and math. She was really excited about the math data because in the past, we really didn't have any way to gauge student performance and strengths and needs besides unit or chapter tests that came with the resource that we were using. So, so it's going really well, the iReady implementation, and we will have student family reports posted in the parent portal in Aspen early in October. So we'll probably send out an email reminder of how to access the parent portal and how to find that report once it's up. Any questions about iReady?
Chris, I might admit this in the beginning, did you, is everybody, has all the grades that are doing them taken them? I know, so I know from my household experience, sixth grade did. I should know if everybody was on the same.
No. So it varies by school, by grade, depending on how many devices are available. So Woodsdale, for example, they've all finished literacy, I think, and they're on to math. The middle school might be done, five and six, and then Beaverbrook, so many kids new to using a device or whatever. So it's, they're definitely gonna use the full window. So everyone's at a different point in progress. Thanks.
Questions not necessarily related to iReady, but for the parent portal, do we have data that shows that all families have access to Aspen and have logged in?
I'm sure that our director of technology, Rich Baikowski, can pull a report from Aspen that shows us how many people haven't logged in or recent activity. So we can ask about that, for sure. Good question.
Thanks.
Next thing I want to make sure you're aware of, you may have heard in the news or seen online, the governor announced literacy launch, the big focus on how we're teaching reading and writing in our schools in Massachusetts, and that's alongside of the Department of Education's own push as far as grants and guidance for districts. So late winter probably will be forming, just like we did for five to 12 math, we'll be forming a curriculum review committee for kindergarten to grade five ELA. That'll do similar work. We'll look at what are we doing, how are we doing it, how is it impacting our students and teachers, and are there changes we should make for alignment as a district, K to five, but also alignment with state standards and expectations. So that is on the horizon. The reason six is not included, grade six and grade five, we had a curriculum review last year for just five and six, mainly because the resources that they use, our licensure was expiring. So we met as a team, five and six, last year, and grade five decided to continue use, using what they're using to be part of the K4 review that'll be happening this year. Grade six didn't really find any resources that aligned with the needs of their students. So they are instead writing their own curriculum, using resources that they have available to them, or letting us know additional resources they might need as supplementary resources and materials. So grade six will not be part of that review for ELA. Any questions about that?
Where would we go to find out more about the literacy launch specifically, if anyone had questions about it?
You can definitely go to Desi's website, which I don't know the actual website address. Anybody?
Probably desi.edu.
Desi.edu, I think. So there'll be information on there about literacy for sure, if not just the state website. The literacy launch was spearheaded by, is being spearheaded by the Secretary of Education, Tutweiler, as well as the governor and lieutenant governor all made statements about it. And there's grant money available depending on where your district is in the process. We're not at the place in the process for the grants that are available currently. The current grant that's available is for districts that already have purchased materials and are looking for funds to help with professional development and implementation. They've promised that the next wave of grants will be for districts that are ready to purchase materials, if they choose to purchase materials. So if that's what the next question was, I don't know.
Kind of, yeah. And is there, are they, I'm sorry, I should know all this, maybe? I don't know. Are there particular recommended materials that they are, that the grants are specifically geared toward? Like, is there a push for a particular curriculum?
Not particular resources, but types of resources, right, that incorporate the brain research that's gone into how we learn to read and write. So not necessarily using the buzzwords of the science of reading.
Okay.
But, but the brain research that helps us understand what we should be doing for kids at certain ages to help them.
So looking at the most current research we have available, go from there.
And resources that are rated on Curate, which is Desi's resource vetting system. So that's their recommendation is always that it's something that's highly rated on Curate, and those have high ratings because they align with that new research.
Perfect.
Any other questions on that one? No? Couple more quick ones. You know that we concluded last year our grade five to 12 math curriculum review. You might remember, because my presentations are so memorable, you might remember that five to, nine to 12 decided to write their own math curriculum because they didn't find any resources that fit the bill enough so that they wouldn't have to rewrite portions of them. So they decided, let's just write our own. And so they started that work over the summer. All the math teachers from the high school met, and they have written a few of the, of the first few units for each course at the high school in math. And they'll continue that work through the year, working as a group with the guidance of Looney Consulting, who has been, this is probably the last project for the high school as far as Looney Consulting goes, but they've been supporting our work in the math content area since 2019, I think. Any questions about math for nine to 12? Seven and eight, yes, you have a question?
Yes. Ballpark, does, does it save us money when the teachers write their own curriculum? Or is it kind of indifferent because we have teachers working extra time and consultants?
It, I would say, I mean, and I defer to my financial colleagues and the superintendent, but it saves us money, but it typically, what they're writing, so yes, they're getting paid for their time, although we're trying to do more curriculum writing during the school year, during the school day, so that teachers can all be part of the process rather than the person who volunteers to do it after school or during the summer and gets paid for it, right?
Yeah.
So we are trying to make that shift, but part of the, the plan that they develop will most likely include resources for each lesson or for units. So we might not be purchasing an entire program for grades nine through 12, but we might be purchasing two or three different resources that teachers can use for different parts of the curriculum.
Okay.
So yes, it saves us money because the programs typically come with a three, four, or six or seven-year digital license, and that's where the big expense is every year. You know, we need more licenses or we need more textbooks. So it saves us money, for sure. How did I do?
Yeah, I think, you know, it used to be, in the olden days, you would buy a set of textbooks and you would plan to replace textbooks every five years, seven years, nine years, but you got into tough budget times and you would say, all right, we're gonna have this math book, we're gonna use it two more years until we're in a better position or another content area needs new resources sooner. But then the digital platforms came about and they pretty much give you the textbooks for free, not, not totally free, because you're buying the licenses. And we've become so dependent on the technology that in, in 2024, our, our, our teaching, our pedagogy revolves around the online portions. So there is, I would bet, I would guess that as they're developing the math program at the, at the secondary level, that we'll be buying some licenses, we'll be purchasing some software packages that will be reoccurring costs.
Okay. And how is the experience for a teacher coming into either a new classroom or new to the district? I would imagine, and I'm obviously not a teacher, but like, I would imagine if you get a curriculum, it's like, here's your guidebook on lesson planning. Is there a similar ease of onboarding? Not that it's ever gonna be easy to onboard a new teacher, but does having your own curriculum make it harder for a new teacher?
You take a stand. I mean, I have my answer, but let's hear your.
Let's see if we're on the same page on this. So regardless of what our materials are, we still have a written curriculum. Our textbooks aren't a curriculum. Our textbooks are, are P, are things we use in our curriculum. So we have a written curriculum, whether the written curriculum includes the resources of a textbook, or written curriculum that we procure our own resources. And I think that's, the math department this year said, we're gonna write our own curriculum and we're gonna procure our own resources. And in other, if they had a math textbook, they'd still be writing the curriculum, writing how we're gonna teach it, how we're gonna go about it, and how the textbook is going to marry what we, the curriculum that we've written.
Okay.
Yes, well done. The only thing I would add is all of our curricular documents that Dr. Michelle is referring to live online for all staff to access, so that it is easy for them to access it at least. And they work with their grade level or their department when you're a new teacher for the pacing and for questions they might have.
Okay.
Thank you.
One more question as we're going through. Sorry, I hurried consulting and just with, within the writing of the curriculum, did our teachers have access, if need be, as they were writing this, to solid specialized and EL resources as needed so that they could be sure that we're hitting the needs of all students, not just?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And they are, they have been and will continue to be included in the process, our special area instruction instructors. So EL, special educators will also be included.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Pam had a question too.
Oh, yeah. I think that kind of answers where I was going. I was gonna ask, and I know you're talking about some of the eighth grade, but the accelerated eighth grade math program, will they have access to the ninth grade new curriculum that is written?
Yes. I haven't thought about that, but they, they would.
Okay.
I was about to talk about seven and eight, yep. So seven and eight, they're not writing their own, and they're also not continuing to work with what the lower grades are using, which we have a few more years with envisioned. Seven and eight decided to pilot this year Fish Tank Plus math, which basically gives them a framework rather than a full resource, so that it's a little less burdensome or cumbersome from writing your own from scratch, but also it's not fully done. So that's what seven and eight are looking at this year as sort of their last, hey, okay, we have it narrowed down, we're gonna check this one out. And so they're a little bit behind what we're doing, but grade nine, most likely that those materials will be available to the eighth grade accelerated class. Okay. All right. And then I had two, one, one more quick one, is that, just as a reminder, that last year, Mr. McCurtin made a proposal about the new report card for the middle school grades five to eight, and so that is being implemented this year. And so families will be seeing that at report card time in Aspen, again, through the parent portal, and there'll be instructions on how to do that. That's it for me. Unless anybody has any questions.
Dr. Bost, were there, was there a change in progress, in how progress reports you were done with that as well?
Yeah, the change for progress reports, the way it's, the way it has changed, it's still the same timing, but rather than it being a separate document or a separate report, at that progress report time, the school will send out a reminder, hey, it's, it's the midpoint in this semester. They do trimesters?
Trimesters.
Yeah, in this trimester. So log into Aspen and check your child's grades, because what you see in the grade book, that's their progress to this point, rather than it being a separate actual report.
Okay.
So that's the change. But there, there will be a reminder, hey, it's the midpoint, take a look.
And parent teachers usually around, parent teacher competition is usually around that time too, so.
Exactly. If that's it, I will say thank you.
Thank you. Next up, art department update with the director of art, Michelle Poirier.
Hi. Apologize for being late. I got my times mixed up. Sorry about that.
That's right. You're good.
So I just wanted to report on, say the art department, K through 12, as an update on areas of growth that we established last year. One of the areas of growth that we had talked about was trying to increase the high school position to full-time. As it was, it was split between middle school and high school, part-time. This would help accommodate advanced digital art classes, alleviate shared staffing scheduling issues, and then, so the high school teacher could participate in common, high school common planning time with the other high school teachers. We weren't able to increase it to full-time, but we did add the advanced digital art classes here, just because smaller numbers of incoming freshmen, we were able to free up a half-year class for both myself and Ms. Caneely. So that's a, that's a plus in the art department this year, that we have an advanced photo class, which is nice, which Anna is in, doing great. This class isn't guaranteed going forward, it just depends on the numbers of how many kids we have enrolled in the classes and if we have room in our schedule to do it. This year, luckily, we could. So we still have the, the shared staff with middle school, which makes it a little hard to plan with the middle school teacher, and it's also kind of a split curriculum. It's very specialized of general art for elementary kids and advanced high school art. So it's kind of like a broad range to ask of an art teacher, but our new teacher is doing really well, hired her this year, and she's, she's doing great. The second area of growth that we talked about was a need for the dedicated art room at Woodsdale, which we were not able to secure this year, though our art teacher does have a home base on the stage in the cafeteria. So she has a, a place to teach, her supplies are nearby, she's not necessarily going into classrooms on a cart, which is great. She has, you know, a space to teach. There is one class that she can push into because of scheduling, but technology issues we've been working on, projectors in general, kind of a distraction for students. So we're, we're working with the tech department on how to better accommodate her with a projector. We've been working on the class time and the, how it overlaps with the lunch schedule, which was a challenge at the beginning of the year that we kind of are working through. Transition times are still a little tough. She teaches on Mondays back-to-back for about two and a half hours straight. So it's a, it's a, it's a hard day, but she's, you know, of course she's doing really well. But that is a challenge at the elementary school that we're still facing. So that's our biggest area of growth, was just a, kind of making that space a little bit more like home, a little bit more like scheduling. You know, it feels a little bit temporary, so we just wanted to make it more welcoming for her as an art teacher. And if we could ever, you know, kind of separate the middle school, high school staff, so it's a little bit more cohesive and a little easier teaching load for that one person who's split between the two schools as it is. Strengths of the department are that all students K through eight are receiving art education. Nine through 12, it's an elective. We have steady numbers of students who are electing to take art classes. We have two new art educators. So at the Beaverbrook and Wisdell, it's her third year in the district, but first year in the elementary grades. First-year teacher for the part-time position for the high school and middle school, both doing really well. And we have three full-time professional status educators from, between the high school and the middle school. And we're still doing the district ride art shows, the youth art month, K through four, which is in March at the public library, where every student has a piece of artwork on display. This year, we hope to get the parent reception night back again. Last year was kind of in transition of when we were hiring in new staff, so it was hard to organize, but this year it should be back on track, having a nice public show. Then we have the Celebrate the Arts Festival, grades five through 12 in May. So it's all students that are taking art in middle school and all students taking art in high school have a show all together, same night, I think, as the chorus this year. The band and the chorus concerts are, are separated this year, so I think it's the same night as the chorus show. And this just shows evidence of the high-quality work that we're doing in Abington, the kids perseverance, their effort, their engagement in the art classes, and it's a really nice night for the students and parents. As part of the Abington Public Schools strategic plan, the department has chosen to concentrate on culture and inclusion as a department. So when we're meeting together on department professional development days, kind of improving, creating welcoming classrooms for all of our students, incorporating home languages more into our instruction, make kids feel really comfortable and like they're part of our class, especially, you know, at the younger ages, if they can't quite understand our language yet. Focusing on student choice projects so that they can really connect with their artwork, make it personal, and bring some of their background into their artwork. And just multiple means of engagement and assessment for, for multiple students and, you know, what they want to bring to art and how we can assess them on where they're at. Our curriculum focuses on the Mass State visual arts standards. There's just four that we really focus on, creating, presenting, responding, and connecting. So this year, we're really trying to focus on the presenting standard of how can a student present their work to others, to a classroom, to their parents. Yeah, so just kind of focusing on how they can talk about art and feel comfortable making art and feeling confident in their work. Art department enrollment, this is at the high school for the electives. On average, we have 300 to 350 students electing art classes from grades nine through 12, which is about 60% of the students. The semester classes are the most popular, so students are really trying to get in on all of the different drawing classes, sculpture classes, photo classes. And, you know, our numbers are staying high, which is really nice, seeing a lot of students. This is the AP art data. It's, it's not much data. We don't, we only have maybe one or two students a year that take AP art. It is a very, very demanding course. Last year, we had one student and she ended up getting a five, which is wonderful. She, only 13% of students in the state end up getting a five in the art portfolios. It's, basically, you create a portfolio of 15 works of art by the end of the year. We usually only make six or seven. So to make 15 in your senior year is very tough, and she did an awesome job. We don't have any students taking it this year. We had a couple interested, but their, their workload, it just was a little bit too much to put art on top of that. Yeah, when they, when they do the AP art, you know, they're, you can see in the last five years, very successful, threes and fours and fives. So it's a really focused, determined student who wants to pursue art in their future that'll take AP art. And that's kind of the state of the department.
Does anybody have any questions, Michelle?
Well, I have two just comments, not questions. That, last year was the first time I went to the Celebrate the Arts in May, and that is, even if you do not have a student that's in five through 12, it's just an amazing experience. The talent in this building is unreal. So I encourage everyone to participate in that. And the second is just kudos to, is Ms. Couture that's at Woodsdale now?
Yes.
She created like an Instagram for communication back home, has been wonderful.
Awesome.
And it's, art is something that like, sometimes you get things sent home at the end, or you see it up at the library, but you don't get as much regular interaction with art. And she's done an excellent job at the elementary level, so kudos to her.
Thank you so much.
Michelle, I was gonna say, the, the two pages before that word showed the trend of high school students. That's a pretty good, like, I mean, I know, like, this year is like 10 below last year, but when you go back a few years, it's like, I don't, I can't do the math that fast, but it's a, a really good percentage increase of enrollment from where it was coming out of COVID, the first couple of years out of COVID, anyway. Anything you can attribute to that? Just, is it, is it, is it always up? It can always go up and down depending on what kind of class there is, or is there anything you can attribute to? Like, is there specific courses that are drawing kids in?
Um, it's kind of, photo's a big one. So now that we had the, the advanced class that got an additional, you know, 20 kids that could take the class, I think if we were to offer another period of digital art, you'd see it go up even more. I think the kids feel really successful and really comfortable with our teachers at the high school. The year going into COVID, it had really spiked.
Okay.
You know, like 450 students had asked for art, and then it kind of dipped a little bit after that. But yeah, I- for art, and then it kind of dipped a little bit after that, but yeah, I think, I don't, I don't know, I think the kids are just really, they like it when they're in the class, it's a different environment than a lot of the academic classes, you know, you can, it's more social, and, you know, it's not, you know, I know, they kind of, they grade themselves so they can kind of put what they, what they want into the class and get what they want out of it, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, they just seem to enjoy it, I think.
Okay, right, thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Ms. Poirier? No? Thank you, Michelle, appreciate it.
Thank you. I leave it.
Up next, reporter Director of Student Services, Dr. Robbins, is it, is it just the, was it two additional homeschool requests? So Dr. Rob, so we have two additional homeschool requests which are on the front page, and for everybody's, if you remember the last time, we had some mix-ups with birthdays, grades, et cetera, there's a correct, there's a corrected page behind that. All we need to vote on tonight is the two additional ones, we did vote on the other ones the last time, so I'll just be looking, if, if there's any questions, please feel free to ask Dr. Robbins. If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the two additional homeschool, motion to approve the two additional home education programs for the 2024-2025 school year.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set, Dr. Robbins, all set. Yep. Reporter of the Superintendent, Dr. Michella.
Thank you. So while Chris is pulling that up, this year I are partaking in the new superintendent induction program, which is a collaboration between the Department of Elementary Education and the Mass Association of School Superintendents. And the, our group this year, our cohort is made up of about 23 or 24 new superintendents in Massachusetts. We meet once a month, there's a, every, every other month it's in person and the other month it's virtual, and then each new superintendent is also assigned a coach. So I have a former superintendent who is, is a coach with me, and so I meet with her pretty regularly as well, some of you who were part of the strategic planning process, it's Dr. Ruth Whitner, so I meet with her regularly, which has been great, and... Chris, if you don't, it's fine.
It's coming.
It's fine. So I wanted to lay a little, lay out a little bit about my entry plan and the planning process, and one of the important pieces of that is to talk about what my core values are, and we talked about this at the opening of school meeting, and you, many of you have seen this, and I don't think any of these, of my core values would be a surprise to you, but my, so these are the things that matter most to me, these are the things that... one more, okay, these are the things that help me make my decisions, these, these are the things that, that matter most to me. So the first one is that relationships matter, fostering strong, respectful relationships with, with everyone in the school community is very important. I believe that we need to strive for high standards and continually improve our teaching and learning, that, I believe that collaboration and teamwork are paramount, so no one voice is more important than another, that we should all have a voice at the table, and that better decisions are made with more, with more input and more voices. I believe in equity and inclusion, providing equitable opportunities for all students, and the safety and wellbeing, both emotionally and physically safe for our students and staff, will help them, help them strive and thrive, both academically and emotionally. That was a lot of tongue-twisting. So as part of my entry plan, you may have seen this also, previously in the next, over the next few months, I plan to observe teaching and learning by visiting schools and classrooms. One of the huge advantages that I have in Abington is that I have been observing classrooms and teaching and learning, I have, I know a lot of the parents, teachers, students, and community members, they're familiar with me, but I continue, I will continue to meet with people who want to talk to me, and I will be reviewing documents and data that we have here, here in Abington. That's over the next few months, and I'm going to seek to do these four things. One is to, what are the, look at what are the perceived strengths of the Abington Public Schools? What are some of the challenges and opportunities? What are the norms, the values, and expectations and goals of the community? And what is this community looking for in the next superintendent? Again, need to say how lucky I am to be in Abington, how lucky I am to work in a community that I know and love, a community that values education, a community that values relationships, and a community that I've been able to build relationships with and with people in the community, and they have been able to build relationships with me. So I, I feel very lucky about that two-way communication, the meetings I've had with people, I feel like people are being really honest with me, and, and that's been great, and I would encourage and invite people to come and meet with me. Email me, call me, stop me in the parking lot, let's talk about the Abington Public Schools. In early spring, you can expect me to provide a report of entry findings. So all of the meetings, the observations, the review of documents and data, in early spring I'll come back to this committee with a synthesis of what I've collected, what I've identified as the strengths of the system, and what requires further, further inquiry, and then also identify our next steps. Any questions? No questions? Okay. Thank you. My next section is around my, my goals for this coming school year, and I provided for you in the packet, draft goals that include student learning goals and professional practice goals. And I'll just do an overview of what the goal is, and then available to ask and answer any questions you may have. The first goal is around student achievement, in conjunction with the Assistant Superintendent, the Director of People's Services, the administrative team, we're looking to achieve the MCAS average score at or above the Massachusetts State Average, which is part of our strategic plan and DESI standard around instruction. And the way that we look to achieve that is to implement and utilize iReady, review MCAS, DIBELS, and Early Literacy results, and provide multi-tiered system of support and intervention for our students, and review MCAS data for gains, gaps, and progress towards meeting our goal. So really looking at our data and, and implementing any changes we need to in our instructional My second student learning goal is success for all learners, so in collaboration with the Assistant Superintendent, the Director of People's Services, and the administrative team, expand knowledge and instructional strategies to foster deeper learning and success for all learners. And we'll be looking to do that by, again, reviewing and updating the district curriculum accommodation plan and the multi-tiered system of supports, and provide professional development regarding universal design for learning. I think I'll stop there, are there any questions on the student learning goals?
Felicia, so reviewed, when you say review, the 2020, so like, that's gonna mean the MCAS data that'll be coming at some point shortly, right?
This week.
Yeah, okay, all right.
It was just... It's today, actually.
Okay, okay.
So now we'll take that, it was embargoed, and it was released today, so we'll take the next month or so to look at data, and are, is there anything that jumps out that we need to be immediately changing? How are we going to use that data to inform instruction within our classrooms?
Okay, do you mind if I just jump in for one second, just let the committee know something?
Oh, sorry.
So for those of you that were part of this before, for Mr. Schaefer, the timeline of the, of the goals, I should have said this before you started, so I'm sorry, I'm sort of up in the middle of it, but the timeline of the goals had kind of, when it, when it was being, when it was being done in its, in its full entirety was, January was almost when they were being set and they were being reviewed in December, almost on a calendar year, made no sense to me based on the way our schools work. So we're setting this up now where Dr. Michelle will come with her goals at the beginning of the school year, the September meeting, and then the mayor, June being, depending on how it fits, will evaluate the goals and how they've come about. So I meant to hit on that before we started, I just forgot, got stuck in the middle of A and B, so I'm sorry about that, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Nope.
I do, I do have a question, if that's all right, I, this just occurred to me, given the potential ballot question out there regarding MCAS, could that potentially affect this goal for you depending on what the outcome is? I mean, the doubt is still gonna be there.
We'll still have the...
But the impetus to perform might change on the student side, I don't know, so I'm just wondering.
So the data for this year, depending where the ballot falls, we may be looking at different data for next year, but for this year, we're looking at school year 24 data, so it was students' performance from last school year, and so that information, that data was released today, so it's how students performed in the spring. And regardless of the, of MCAS, the high-stakes test, there's still, this, it all comes back to our state standards, and that's what the MCAS is evaluating, but it's also what our curriculum is based on. I should also, can I also mention, Chris, here?
Yeah, of course.
And I should have talked about this at the beginning, so my goals are aligned to our strategic plan, and, which was completed last year, and you all have a new handy-dandy flyer, thank you, Danielle.
Amazing.
And so my goals are aligned to our strategic plan, then all the principal goals will be aligned to my goals. The school improvement plans will be aligned to my goals and the strategic plan, and then teachers' goals, so it becomes a through line of what the goals are for the district. So, well, like, I'm not actually teaching a student in third grade around, I'm not in their classroom teaching, but I'm providing the structure for that to be able to occur at a high level. So I, the two student learning goals, then I have three professional practice goals. So my first professional practice goal is around leading learning walks, these are experiences that the administrative team partakes in, and as a leadership team led by myself and, and Dr. Boston, and the principal of that building, we as 13 administrators go and visit classrooms within each building, looking at specific look-for's that have been identified by the principals, and observe in classrooms, then come back together and talk about what we saw. And it's really, it's a great way to calibrate how you view teaching and learning. And through that, we then, and I say the royal, we, Dr. Boston, the past, has provided what we call a feedback memo, and it is generalized, generally what have we seen when we visited the school, what was really great, what were some things that we had questions about, what were some things that we'd learn, want to learn more about? And then that feedback memo, very generalized, not about any particular classroom, you have to have seen something more than once, actually, to have a generalized comment. And then that feedback memo then provides the principals an opportunity to speak with their teachers about the teaching and learning within their building. So it's, so using walkthroughs, the other thing that it does is helps calibrate all of the principals for what was, what was proficient, what was exemplary, what, what did they see in their rooms? It's been a very effective tool for us. I think we're in year four, five, doing formal walkthroughs. My second professional practice goal is around participating in the new superintendent induction program, and I spoke about that earlier. And then my third goal is around communication, to enhance and standardize homeschool communication across the district by updating centralized communication systems and practices for all classroom buildings and districts. And we are currently, we currently have some new software that we've been able to use, but we're also looking at developing some protocols, some expectations that, for secondary, for middle school, for the elementary levels, to have some more consistency around that. We're also working on, currently working on, what gets sent out through constant contact, what gets sent out through a text message, what gets sent out through an email, what gets sent out through all three. So truth be told, we're still in the early stages of that, so we are kind of making game day decisions, when something happens, how is this going out, but I see that being more formalized and standardized in the coming month, month. Those are my proposed goals. Any heavy questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Michelle? And I think like we said too, like, so even hottie for the MCAS thing, they do form around the strategic plan, but they are for this school year too, so if, like, next year, I know I got some feedback too on some other things as part of the strategic plan, there may be more in the future, they may end up becoming part of these goals during the future timeframe. So I let you all know, I did send you all these about a week ago when I got them, we do not have to, if you're not comfortable, you don't have to make the motion tonight to approve them, however, if you are, we are, we are obviously well and welcome to do that. So without any specific questions that you may, you may have already addressed with her, anyway, I'm comfortable moving forward, is everybody else comfortable moving forward on them? Okay, so I'll be looking for a motion to approve Dr. Michelle's goals for the 2024-2025 school year as she just presented.
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, I look forward to working with all of you and the school community, not just on these goals, but looking at improving the educational experience for our students.
Great, thank you, Dr. Michelle. All right, I'm gonna grab the next one off of hers because it fits, probably fits more for, it's not for Dr. Michelle to have to worry about, it's for the school committee. So the school committee has a representative on the Abington CAM Board of Directors that we appointed, I want to say three years ago, quite frankly, a lot's happened since, and I don't remember exactly when it was, but it was about that timeframe. Her name is Jessica Johnson, she emailed me and let me know that she was interested in returning to that board, I think I forwarded it to all of you. I, I do have, like, I just have some notes here that I may or may not have borrowed, but just what Abington CAM has been able to do, because Jessica kind of came on board, I want to say it was 2021, it was 2020, 2021 timeframe somewhere in there, where there was a lot of changes happening with Abington CAM, they had a new director come on board, and there was a lot of angst about how it was gonna affect schools. I think it's safe to say over the last four years, Abington CAM has done great things working with the school department. They have a successful student internship program that's grown, they have a middle school film camp that I think takes place in the summer, they've obviously covered, covered, produced tons of school events, graduation, National Honor Society, anything that takes place in the auditorium almost, all of our meetings, virtually every, almost every sporting event you can think of, and if it's in the gym, it's on auto-stream because of the cameras that they have set up in there. I heard from Kevin as well with, he couldn't, he was, he had tons of praise for Jessica and the work that she's done there. She's there, if we have any questions, we want to go to Abington CAM, we can reach out to her on it. I did not, I haven't heard from anybody else that's interested in, in being the member for the school committee. I'll leave it to anybody else, we don't have to hear from them, if there's anybody that you think may be somebody to be on there, but without that, their, their, their board starts up again in October, our meeting is too late in October to do it, so that's why we have it on our agenda for this month to appoint a member for the Abington CAM Board of Directors. So is there any questions I can help answer? Jessica wanted to make it, she had a prior commitment that she couldn't be here today, so that's why she emailed, and you all have her email, you can feel free to reach out directly to her as well if you'd like. But I'm happy to answer anything I can, if you have any. If not, we can move forward with the motion. Okay. So I will make a motion to appoint Jessica Johnson as the school committee representative to the Abington CAM Board of Directors.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll let her know. Thank you very much. Next up, the reporter, the Director of Finance and Operations, Ms. Saragani. of finance and operations, Ms. Saragani.
Good evening. Um, I just have one item tonight. Um, tonight we have the FY26 budget and development, um, budget development and article planning schedule, um, which includes a series of dates for the budget planning process. Um, I'm just going to highlight a few of these dates. I won't go through the whole document. Um, but at the end of October, I will send out all of the FY26 budget documents to our principals, our department heads and our directors. Um, from there, um, until submission into um, uh, early December, departmental and building budgets will be developed with input from faculty, staff and school council. Um, from there, Dr. Michella, Dr. Boston and I will hold budget proposal review meetings on December fifth, sixth and ninth of 2024. Following these meetings, we will then meet with the business and finance subcommittee, um, date to be determined. And from there, a preliminary budget will be presented to the school committee on January seventh, 2025. Um, and from here, there'll be a series of meetings throughout the winter and spring of 2025 with the school committee, the town finance committee and subcommittees. With the final step being town meeting, which will vote um, on the final FY26 budget and article request, which will take place on Monday, April seventh, 2025. Um, with this schedule laid out as described, would you consider a motion to approve the FY26 budget development and article planning schedule? Does anyone have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Gani?
No questions. I'll make a motion.
No.
What's that?
Hang on one second. Um, first of all, sorry, I was looking, I can't believe it's going to be uh, 2026.
I know.
So did you say town meeting was April seventh, 2025 though?
Yes.
Was that when the schedule for, all right, okay.
It is, yes.
That's good, you already know that.
Yep.
All right. Um, do you have anything you need to add or no? Okay. Um, so with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the budget development and article planning schedule as recommended.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Good luck as that gets started. I know it may be a tedious, a tough one as you, as you saw, so definitely we'll keep posted in
Thank you.
With the subcommittee, so.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Establishment of the next school committee date, uh, Tuesday, October 29th, 2024, uh, six thirty PM here in the library. Um, I wanted to mention informational items. So there is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Report of the Resolutions. These are kind of here as an FYI. Uh, we will vote on these as a committee, um, next meeting and we can, um, I know Ms. Galer sent out a message today. If anybody's interested, if we figure out who's interested, able to go, we'll be there for this, if anybody can, right? It's, I know we all have jobs, kids and things like that. We'll nominate somebody to be our spokesperson, our representative for those meetings at that time. Um, some dates to remember, Thursday, October 3rd, in-service early release date. October 10th is the high school parent, October 10th and 11th is the high school parent conferences with the 11th being a half day for the high school. Um, October 14th, no school on Columbus Day. October 17th and 18th, uh, school conferences for Beaverbrook with the 18th being a half day. And October 24th and 25th, conferences at the Woodsdale with the 25th being a half day. And I'm pretty sure I think the middle school is like the first week in November or something like that. So um, we'll be here after that. I don't have anything else to add at this time. If, does anybody else have anything they wanted to add?
There's an LPAC meeting tomorrow night.
Okay. LPAC meeting on Wednesday, September 25th, probably in like the
I don't know where or what time though.
Probably downstairs somewhere, right? Cafeteria Seminar Room? Seminar Room? Okay, thanks, James.
I think the um, boosters have the
That was last week. Booster's meeting was last week.
No, the door-to-door.
Oh, do you know when it is?
I do. No. It's um,
How about this? The Boosters Door-to-Door Dash, which is their biggest fundraiser of the year.
Is it October 20th?
Okay, will take place before our next meeting. It'll be a Sun, I think it's a Sunday, right? A Sunday in October.
It's October 20th.
Um, so be on the lookout for those, I know solicitors, whatever, but these are, they'll be, they'll be student athletes driven around by parents, um, throughout the neighborhoods of Abington, looking for donations. Keep your eye on Facebook or maybe even Constant Contact. There'll be information as you can submit, um, I think last they started taking Venmo payments or submissions online if you weren't going to be around or things like that. So be on the lookout for that. That's their biggest fundraiser of the year, uh, where they raise money for a lot of different equipment, for able to, uh, to pay, I think a good chunk of varsity jackets for those that qualify for it. Um, and I was, I missed the meeting last week, so I didn't get everything on it, but it's, those are a lot of the items that they're able to do. So just be on the lookout for that as well. Anybody else have anything to add?
I would say the other thing is just as we're wrapping up all the different activities and things like that, for parents who don't know if they have Corries on file, it's a good idea to check because anytime there's a big scale event, central office gets hit with a lot of last minute quarry forms, quarry checks, things like that. So, you know, we love to have people involved and we love to have people help out. And the worst thing is when you have to tell someone they can't because they don't have a quarry on file. So it takes two minutes.
I was gonna say, Dr. Michelle, can I ask the best way for somebody to check if they have a quarry on file?
Probably to email Danielle Galor or Cheryl Darty and, uh, in our office and they can get right back to you on that.
Okay.
Or they can call the office as well.
And then I will bring them both coffee to, I was for bringing it up.
They can also call our office, uh, and we have a record of that.
Okay, great. Good reminder, Heidi, I had to do it. Actually, so, um, thank you. Um, if there's nothing else, I'll be looking for a motion. Oh, yep, go ahead, James.
October 8th.
Okay, in the library, right?
Yep.
So the CPAC will be meeting on October 8th, which is a Tuesday, Tuesday, October 8th at six thirty PM here in the high school library as well. Um, with that, I will be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good rest of your night.